Yeah, good point. Oh boy, sorry. Alright, let's call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and happy holidays for our last meeting of the year. This is the, uh, this is the fun meeting. We are... Thank you. Yeah, I have, uh, I just wanna see... Thank you, there's the agenda. Uh, we are...
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you all, there's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This is a tough crowd to throw this out there, but are there any residents, except for Mr. Grimm? Any resident comments and/or questions for any items not on the agenda this evening? Oh, and Mr. Weigand, I'm sorry, this is not, not for you. Dude, you wanna come up and run the meeting? Come on up. Alright, come on up bud. Come on, it's the end of the year.
It's fine, it's fine.
Come on up.
You're gonna do a better job than here.
You've got a mayor.
Yep, have a seat. Introduce yourself as the interim mayor. What's your first name?
William.
William, what's your last name?
Cox.
Okay, Mr. William Cox, will you please ask Mr. John Von Walter to come up? Because we are going to give him a community service award.
Mr. Von Walter, can you please come up?
Okay, have a seat right over kinda next to, um...
I'll just stand between us.
Yep, yep, stand right there. Mr. Von Walter, this is, uh, it is a long time coming for Mr. Von Walter. I would argue that this city wouldn't be here without Mr. Von Walter. Not that he was around in 1804. 1852. He is definitely our historian. I think everyone in this room knows and appreciates John in the way that we do. It's interesting to me because anytime that we start talking about anything historical within this town, the very first phone call we make is to John Von Walter. And his wife sometimes contradicts some of the things that he says, and then they work it out and they get back to us with a, uh, the idea that John had in the first place. But, uh, this is an award that is recognized community-wide. And the reality is, is that this council, Brent, Mr. Schoke, and the entire staff, this is one of the few unanimous awards that we've had. Where everybody, when Mr. Von Walter's name was brought up, everybody just went, "Uh-huh." So with that, Mr. Von Walter is almost Mr. Carver, and I'd like to present him with an award, and we gotta get some pictures. We're leaving you out there. We left you out there for a little bit.
I won't hug you again.
You can, well, you gotta come down here and take a picture. And for the record, I would, I would argue that Mr. Von Walter looks absolutely tremendous. Congratulations. Leave the look in what the history of America has been. And you're so shocked, I mean, you have to hold this. It's your award. I've done this before. Come on, this is your grandpa. Alexandra, you wanna come in? Come on in. Greg? Congratulations.
Alright, thank you. Congratulations. Thanks to you all. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you.
Where's the mayor? Where's the mayor?
Come on, hey, Mr. Mayor.
Can't leave in the middle of a meeting.
It's a marathon, it's not a sprint.
So every year we do an individual award, and absolutely no one more deserving than Mr. Von Walter. Every year we do a group award as well. And again, I don't think there's a more deserving group of people that give tirelessly, tirelessly to this community. And the things that they've done and the, I mean, I'm looking at the individuals representing the Lions this evening, and, um, and I might not actually be kidding when I can tell you that there's probably about 150 years of service between these people, and all of them in Carver. Mr. Grimm has served as the worldwide leader of the Lions. I know, Mr. Grimm, I embarrass you. Mr. Weigand is just really old. And, um, we have a unique relationship. But ultimately, at the end of the day, between steamboat days and everything done within the city, this city truly would not be here without Mr. Von Walter, and it actually would not be here without the Lions. So with that, I don't know who you're gonna have represent, but we...
Probably the president, maybe President Lion Tim.
President of the Lions, oh... Yeah, but he's a wrestler. Alright, let's get some pictures.
Lions, go, can you please come up?
Don't you think all the Lions should come up?
Yeah, get on up.
I think all the Lions should come up. Yeah.
Cindy, you and I are Lions.
Gather round, gather round. Yeah, why don't you go next to Christie there, so it's, it's harrowing. Harvey, can you stand on that next riser there? Don't put Jim up there.
How come our temporary mayor's not in these pictures? Yeah. You have to be mayor until we adjourn.
You've got four more hours of this.
No, I won't take that one, I swear.
Three and a half.
If you could say, "Moving on to 5.2."
Moving on to 5.2.
Thank you, William. We have another, and this is, and Alexandra, thank you so much for coming tonight. Koopa Loop, you the man. Anything you, anything you wanna say to the crowd before you go?
Nicely done.
Yeah, I think he's proud of his grandpa. We're moving on to another absolutely blast part of this entire year. Mr. Von Walter, thank you again. And you look, you look great. By the way, anybody want to help the Von Walters with any shoveling this year? We're gonna be helping them out along the way. Rudolph's, we'll, we'll coordinate. Right on. Every year, we take great pride in what we have onboard in terms of staff. And I think Cindy and I have been around the longest, and we've seen a lot of people. But what we've seen within this organization is, we don't have a ton of turnover. And the reason that we don't have a ton of turnover is, A, it's a great place to work, and B, we've always had good leadership in our city manager position. And part of what that does is allow some pretty creative and innovative things to happen where other cities may or may not have the wherewithal or the guts to try things outside the box. And if you know anything about cities, hey, we're talking to architects. You guys have worked at cities before, we're pretty linear. We say, "Well, what has Chaska done, what has Victoria done?" Our current Employee of the Year Award, I'm skipping. I apologize, Callie, I'm going over, I thought Brian was first, we'll get to you. One of the most innovative public services people I've worked with, and this is my 20th year, Brian Schoke came onboard the same time I had my first meeting as mayor. And he was hired, and we had lunch with Brian, Brent and I both had lunch with Brian. My comments to Brian were, "I have absolutely no idea how to be mayor, so I need you to take your department and make it work for all of us." And it was his first day. And what I will tell you is that Brian has not only taken that department and made it work for all of us, he's done some things that city engineers look and say, "Wow." And he's really helped put us on the map. So with no further ado... Oh, Brent, you were supposed to do all this. Did I hit it? Alright, alright, yeah. Mr. Mayor. Sorry, Brent, do you have any? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Oh, you get it.
Alright.
Aren't you supposed to be in the picture?
You're supposed to be in the picture.
You should stand right on this side of here, right?
Take your boot off.
Your hair, your hair looks... I apologize, I did, I... Congratulations. Thank you. If you're a mayor one day, this will be a really cool picture. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Nice. You have one more?
I'm taking Callie too. Mr. Trimble, why don't you come up here? We have a longstanding history of having one of the best fire departments, not only in, and this is a bias, not only in the southwest area, but I would argue in the state. We have always had extremely good leadership within the fire department, and some of the decisions that have been made at the fire department's leadership have been interesting at times, and always for the better of the fire department. Over the course of the last probably eight years, Brent and I have had interactions with the fire department, and we've had a lot of push and pull and butting heads for good reasons, for the better of the fire department, as well as for the better of the city. And Callie, you've been second chief now for, it's only been a year. The relationship between the fire department and the city has always been a decent one, and with Callie as second chief, it is now an incredible one. The faith and the trust within the fire department from a city standpoint is, unlike, it's never been this fantastic. And the relationship between Chief Meyer and second chief Trimble is absolutely unbelievable, and what that allows us to do. Brent can have a relationship with Danny Meyer, I can have a relationship with Callie, and vice versa. So the information gets disseminated, and the decisions are made in a way that benefit everyone. And it has not always been that way. And I give Employee of the Year to Callie Trimble for not only the relationship with the city and Mr. Merrick and myself, but also the relationship with Mr. Schoke and the public services with who they share a building. And it can get contentious at times when the fellas and ladies all get after it. So I give most of the credit to the leadership level, and at that leadership level, to Callie Trimble, and I really wanna thank you for that. Do you wanna say, "Thank you, Callie, for everything?"
Thank you, Callie, for everything.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, William, we got another picture, bud. I love your shoes, by the way. Love your shoes, your mom did nice calls. You're welcome.
Oh, we got most of them, let's go.
Come on up. I think, um, I think this is a really good example of, um, just great commitment, not only to the city of Carver, but from the city of Carver, between the Lions. Mr. Schoke, who came onboard, doesn't live in the town, but takes on like it's his own. Callie, who used to live in the town, but then moved away. But is obviously within the fire district. And Mr. Von Walter, and the, I mean, we have some of the greatest people. And what I thank all of you for is your involvement and your commitment, because not every community has this. And we would not be anywhere without you guys. And to that, I would just wanna clap and say, "Thank you all." Can you just say, "Thank you, everyone, on behalf of the Cox family"?
Thank you, everyone, on behalf of the Cox family.
Nice, that's pretty good, right there. So we do not have a public hearing tonight. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Uh, there's a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have no unfinished business. Can you ask if Joel, is Joel Dunning in the house? Just ask if Joel Dunning is in the house?
Is Joel Dunning in the house?
Mr. Dunning from Wall of Architects and Engineers will talk about the design approval. Design approval?
Design approval.
In the Broadway City Hall project.
In the Broadway City Hall project.
You might wanna sit down for this, it could get a little boring.
Okay.
Thanks, Callie. And family, because you guys make a commitment as well, so... And really good chili. Mr. Dunning?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is the Design of the Year Award portion, I think, but...
Nice segue.
Brent has it.
Hooker, alright. What do I point? We're excited to present... Too far. There we go. Present the culmination of the design process. We still have a couple months to do drawings after this step, and specifications, and get the project ready for bidding and then construction. But the major design effort has been completed, and so we wanted to present that to the council. On the screen here is the first floor plan for the new city hall space. The public entry is oriented towards the corner of Broadway and Fourth Street. The entry, two sets of doors go into the vestibule, and then into a public lobby just beyond that. Off of that public lobby is a conference room for meetings of about six or eight people. There are public toilets towards the back of the space, behind a screen wall. And then on the right of that lobby space are stairs and an elevator that lead upstairs to city offices. The majority of the first floor plan is the multipurpose room that seats nearly 200 people in dining seating, and then space for a kitchen on the far, far left of the plan.
What kind of kitchen?
It will be a kitchen with commercial quality to it.
Thank you.
The, some of the details left to work out are which exact equipment needs to go in it, but the space is allocated, and we know that there's a lot of flexibility in that space. The far left end of the plan shows a door leading from the kitchen to the front patio, or porch as it's labeled. You'll see when we get to the renderings that that porch has some doors off of the multipurpose room, so that there's some outdoor space off of the sidewalk. And as the sidewalk descends down the hill, the porch stays flat, so it gives a little bit of a raised view of Broadway. There is a door that leads from the kitchen out to that porch, so that if grilling or other loading of, of food and other things, supplies to the kitchen needs to happen, it can happen there. And then there's also a second egress out of the kitchen that is right next to the egress door from the stair that comes from the city offices from the upper level. Comes out to a landing down about eight steps to a, an area between, it's a level area between the existing alley and the building, about 12 feet wide, that, 10, 12 feet wide, that allows flat access from that stair all the way out to the sidewalk. So you can also bring supplies and so on out. As well as trash will leave the kitchen and leave the city offices out those top-left doors, and then go down to, those squares are the trash bins. A lot of effort in the last week or two has gone towards the electrical service and how to handle that electrical service. They're still doing, Excel is still doing some engineering, but we did locate that transformer for the building just beyond the alley. It'll be up above the creek before the, um, the grade drops off to the creek. So they're still looking at engineering of different options of how to run power lines, how to potentially abandon power poles, and run electric service underground. And we're hoping to hear of that in the next couple weeks. Any questions on the first floor, before I move on?
I have one question. This actually was just, excuse me, this was just asked of me right before the meeting. There isn't a space on here that is labeled for a coat closet? Do we have any ideas of what the plan is for that, or how we're going to manage that?
Yeah, we talked about maybe having some rolling racks. There's a long door, or long wall, just above the, the double doors that lead into the multipurpose room, that the rolling racks could store coats along that area. Any other? There was quite a bit of discussion in the core group about whether we build in racks, build in coat hooks.
So the, whether it be rolling racks or like a built-in, the thought would be kind of similar to when you walk downstairs into the current, what I'll call, hall basement, there's kinda built-ins along that long wall. You could do the, you could do the same treatment there. The one discussion point that hasn't been worked out is, you know, with the roller pieces, whether or not there'd be a drop screen, would that drop, a drop screen get in the way of a permanent built-in? But it is something that we're thinking about, of where to put coats and kinda winter gear. So if the council has any suggestions on preferences, we can certainly integrate that into the plan.
The lobby's a rather big area. Is there any way, has it been looked at, to have any kind of closet on the outside of that room?
We discussed that, and our concern with the lobby on the outside is, because of the nature of the space, we felt like folks would wanna see their jacket in the same room, and storing their jacket outside of the room when the vestibule is always open. We didn't like the idea of having jackets sitting out and being susceptible to being taken.
Plus, I think that room wouldn't be, if you have 200 people going into that room, and everybody's putting their jacket in, waiting to get in. I love the idea of the rolloys, 'cause you have all the flexibility in the world. If you wanna have them lengthways, east-west, north-south, you can put them wherever you need to. And nobody wears boots anymore, except Mr. Weigand. Come on up, Mr. Buckham.
Regarding the first level, is there a difference in elevation between the commercial kitchen and the alley? If there is, I'd just wanna negotiate the difference in elevation as far as carrying supplies.
Yeah, the, uh, the site slopes from right to left, about four and a half feet. And so to locate the main entry, for accessibility, it's important to have the inside of the building be all one level, to provide accessibility to all the, all the floors. So there's, that drop occurs out on the stairs that are just to the left of that orange, orange stair, enclosed stair, fire exit stair. I don't know if the laser pointer will work here, but, okay, the...
What are your exterior elevations?
Or is that skipping ahead?
I think, we can... I think the best way to explain it, Bill, is the, the flat area next to the alley, so just to the, what I'll call, north of the alley, is accessible by vehicle. So you'd, you'd have to go up about eight steps to get into the kitchen, but you wouldn't have to park at the bottom of the alley and navigate up. Does that make sense?
Kinda make, but the entrance, the main entrance into the lobby, and then into the community room.
It's all the same level.
It's all, so I mean, if you had things that were on, say, pallets with wheels, you could go in the main door and not, and avoid stairs.
And if you wanted to avoid tracking things through the whole building, that's another reason for that porch. The porch is all flat as well, and there's the door that leads, leads from the kitchen to the porch as well.
Yep, and that's real close to the kitchen.
Okay, so moving to the upper level, here you see the stair and the elevator coming up on the right side of the plan. There's a waiting area in the middle. Conference room that can be used as a work session room on the bottom of the plan, the bottom of the blue area. And then a large meeting room that could be used for council meetings on the top side. There is archive storage, a IT server room, and an AV room for the cable control off the right side of that large meeting room. Off the left side of that meeting room is access to a break room, so there's easy coffee and snack service and other things like that for meetings happening in the large room. And then the orange space is all city staff space. There is plan for additional, or in the plan is space for additional future potential employees. So there is growth built in, growth built into the plan. The reception desk is designed so that there are multiple points of service. You could have a number of, two or three citizens at the counter, each meeting with a different staff person. Administrative areas towards the front, near the reception, and then a copy work area seems, or functions as a visual barrier between that front area and some of the back office space. Where there's some collaborative spaces, some file storage that you can stand, stand up and have a meeting around a higher table. Five offices, and four more workstations in the back. And then in the bottom left of the plan is a, another conference room for more city staff use. There's plenty of occasions now where staff have a meeting and don't have a place to meet. Beyond the stairs on the top left that I referenced in the lower-level plan, there's also two staff toilets, janitorial space, and election storage that round out the rest of the floor plan. Are there questions on this floor? So then we have some exterior images, I believe, here. So this is the...
Would this building have some actual recent technology in it?
As recent as you want, yes.
Okay.
There is a line item budget for equipment, AV equipment. So this is a rendering from Broadway, looking across Broadway at the Broadway elevation. We've met with the Heritage Preservation Commission twice, gathered input them on the, from them on the first meeting, and feedback, and incorporated that feedback, and then brought it back to them, and although, we were, we were very happy. And although they gave only subtle comments the first time, they made a comment that they felt like it was a whole different building the second time they saw it, that the changes were, had a lot of impact. So we're very happy with their response. We were planning two different brick colors to accentuate the different masses of the building, to try and break down the size of the building, so that it is more in alignment with the size of other buildings in the historic district. The far right, obviously, that's the prominent entry. We have an element on the, the far right of that, that, as you can see, it's labeled "City Hall" and the address, has a stair tower in it that we've toned down, the steeple-like qualities of that tower, to make it more civic-looking. A canopy over the main entry with a big arched window to signify to the public that that's the entry. And then the recessed portion in the middle is really the dining, or the multipurpose space on the main level, and the city offices on the upper level. That's a slightly warmer brick than the tan Carver brick that's the, the two bookends. And then the far left is the kitchen on the lower level and conference room above. You can see how the porch space remains flat with a couple of planters put on it to add, soften up that space and add some greenery. And the sidewalk falls as you head towards the river on Broadway. View, a little bit further down Broadway, looking back. There you can see how the elevation from the sidewalk leads to that walking area that's between the existing alley and the building. It's nice and flat for supplies to be brought in, or a car to be backed up into that area, and then brought up the stairs into the door into the kitchen on the far left of the plan. Some high windows into the kitchen on the first level, and then windows into conference room and hallway space on the upper level. On the Fourth Street side, the space is... On the fourth street side, um, the, uh, spaces, uh, council chambers on the far right top. The bottom right is really an, uh, air intake louver to the mechanical room that's serving the whole building.
Louver.
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 Correct. Um, and the, the two windows next to the stair tower are really just, uh, letting light into the lobby and then the waiting area up on the upper level. Going around the corner, um, a little bit further up Fourth Street, the backside of the building, um, because people might be coming down the hill and, and this might be a very prominent view for them. Uh, we don't want to leave it blank. Uh, we want as many windows and, and repeat the fenestration pattern, um, of the, uh, the main facades on the backside. So you have the council chambers on the top floor here, more louvers on the lower level, and actually some frosted glass into the bathrooms on the bottom right. The, uh, warmer brick in the middle is again the dining room on the, or multipurpose room on the lower level, and then city offices on the upper level. I think this is not related to our project, so.
[laughing]
I'll go back.
I love the, I love the, I love the windows, then the light. That's, I mean, you guys are the professionals and, um, I also want to thank the task force and everybody that's been involved with this process because, um, that's the stuff that, uh, you guys are good at. And, uh, I think it looks like a great building. I know staff is happy with it.
I would like to thank the staff as well for their input, as, along with the Heritage Preservation Commission. I think that it really did, uh, help refine this to, uh, the building it is, the design it is today.
Does anyone have any questions for our architects?
I do. Can you go back to the slide that shows, um, the drive elevation where it dips down next to the left-hand side of the building? If you're looking at it, there we go. So one, I want to thank you also as the liaison for the HPC. What we do see here on this building, you have really taken their comments and their concerns and really put it into this, and they would be more than happy to see how this has turned out even from their last meeting. So I think that you've done a really great job. The only question I have on this is that we had talked about where the garbage receptacles were going to be, and there was a little bit of a, I don't know, a blocked-in area for that. I don't see this on this plan. What is the plan for that?
Right now, the plan is there just left of that stair.
Okay, so they've been moved back a little bit?
Yep, they're, they're pushed back away from the street.
Okay.
I think it's entirely possible to look at some sort of privacy fence to shield that view as well. It's just, uh, convenience, whether, whether it's worth convenience or not, uh, to shield those.
Okay. Thank you for putting in the flagpoles also.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
That really looks great. Great job with, and great job from the building committee and everybody who's been along this path.
I would entertain a motion to approve the floor plan and building elevation designs for the Broadway City Hall project.
I would like to make that motion.
So, Kristi Mark.
I'll second it.
I don't want to say Mr. Henry, because then it means they didn't say Ms. Mark. So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the Broadway City Hall project? Thank you again, and let's get going. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I just have one follow-up on this.
Please do.
Piece. Um, just kind of explaining again for the public that's in attendance and was watching on, uh, television or watched later, uh, online. Um, the city sent out kind of a first edition newsletter kind of on the financing piece of the project. Um, in the January newsletter, there'll be, uh, it'll be three pages dedicated to the design of the building, the floor plan layouts, and some internal renderings, um, of the building. And so those are kind of like the financing piece. The design piece are going to follow one, two. We have a, uh, webpage or project page, as we call it internally, uh, for the entire building. And what this is leading to is a, a public hearing on Tuesday, uh, January sixteenth, to go over a capital improvement plan which has this project.
Which is our second meeting in January.
Correct. And so it's the only project in it, and that's the vehicle that the city council can consider, uh, to finance the project. So by approving, uh, the capital improvement plan, uh, that gives you the vehicle to do that. And so that public hearing is an opportunity for residents, whether are in attendance tonight or watch this meeting or see the newsletter, to come in and say, I like, you know, the, whether it's related to the design, whether it's related to the, the tax impact or the overall cost. A great opportunity. If you can't make that meeting, we can also take comments via email or if you want to write them in. Um, and then we'll include all those in the packet, uh, for the Tuesday, January sixteenth meeting. So I just wanted to kind of briefly give an overview of the, our next steps. Uh, tonight, the council's only really approving the, kind of the design of the building, but kind of the meat and potatoes of the actual project we'll come to at your, uh, Tuesday, January sixteenth meeting.
So any comments, questions, and if you can't be at the meeting on January sixteenth, send a phone call or an email to Mr. Merrick at City Hall. Um, otherwise, there will be a public forum, uh, public meeting on January sixteenth, which is a Tuesday, and, uh, we'll take all public input at that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's go right back to you for, uh, the 2018 budget and levy. Thank you, by the way, Bolden Architects. Good chat.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight we have, for your consideration, two resolutions. One, uh, for the adoption of the 2018 property tax levy and, uh, 151-17, uh, for the 2018 budget, which includes a general fund and then our three, uh, enterprise funds, which are water, sanitary sewer, uh, stormwater, and then we also include a debt service fund. So just give a brief, uh, overview. Uh, these are 2018, excuse me, expenditures, uh, breaking down by percentage, uh, all the way from public service at nearly a quarter, uh, down to recreation at two percent. Um, our debt service schedule, you can see our history going back to 2015. Uh, this does include the 2017 A's, uh, which is our downtown west project. The, we'll be doing the, uh, final completion of that with the final surface of blacktop in the spring and some other punch list items. Um, I do like to point out that the, the 2011 A's, which is the Levi Griffin Road Project, uh, starting in 2021, if there isn't any additional development, the city will, uh, take on another $106,000 in debt service, um, related to that project.
2021.
2021. Did I say something different?
Nope, I just, uh, just reiterating.
Uh, 2018 revenues, and this is general fund only. I should clarify, uh, property taxes makes up about eighty percent of, of the revenues, and then fees and licenses, aides, grants, uh, fire contracts. Again, that's a piece that continually goes down as our population and our tax base gets larger. Uh, it pushes down the cost for, uh, the townships related to, or San Francisco and Dogren Township related to basically their piece of the pie for that, uh, service. Uh, preliminary levy is a nine-point-two percent increase. You can see the general levy and the associated debt service levy, uh, for a total of $2,369,873. Uh, so, uh, from a tax perspective, uh, you can see for, these are proposed rates. Um, so, uh, for those in attendance and for those watching, uh, the city sets a preliminary levy in September that cannot be exceeded, and so they can drop. So these rates that you see for other Carver County cities, uh, are subject to being redo, being reduced by their, uh, appropriate city councils based on their own budget processes. Uh, based on our budget, uh, or the levy that was set by the city council in September, uh, the Carver County Taxpayer Services Department, uh, does a calculation based on the city's, uh, taxable market value, and that comes up with a tax rate. And so you can see a history of our tax rate, uh, going back to 2012, uh, based on the levy that the city council set in September. Uh, the proposed tax rate would be, uh, forty-seven-point-six-three. And so the reason, even though you see a levy that increased by nine-point-two and a tax rate goes, goes, going down is really a function of the growth that's occurring, uh, in the city related to residential growth, um, and commercial growth in the city.
So what you're saying is that's a good thing?
Correct. And then the last thing is, one of the things that we have done in the past years is actually show a real-life example of a number of properties and how their estimated market value has changed from 2017 to 2018, and then what the associated tax impact was. And so you can see the variety of home values from 125,000 all the way up to 452,000. These are, uh, we actually asked for truth and taxation statements, uh, for specific properties, uh, from different neighborhoods throughout the community. And so these are the, this is the, uh, data from those, uh, truth and taxation statements. So you can see that homes, for example, the $452,000 home and the $172,000 home that, uh, had no change in their market value, um, uh, had a drop or decrease of about three-point-nine percent in their city property taxes. And that's one of the things that we went over at our truth and taxation, uh, hearing is sometimes, uh, the truth and taxation statements can be a little bit difficult to read when you, either there's a Carver County piece, there's a city piece, there's a school district piece. And the example that we use, it's kind of like getting your cable bill, your gas bill, and your electric bill all in one bill. And so the city has the, the ability to change the city portion of that, but there's some other layers to that. And a lot of times, folks, you know, human nature has to look at the bottom line and see how that impacts. Uh, so these rates reflect the city of Carver's line item on that truth and taxation statement. So, uh, in your packet is a copy of the truth and ta- taxation summary, along with the resolutions for each of the levy, or for the 2018 levy and budget, as well as line item budgets for all the, for the general fund and the enterprise funds that I previously mentioned. Happy to take any questions from the council.
I think we're where we were last time. Same good job, and I think, uh, the numbers make sense. They do for me. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion and we adopt Resolution 150-17, certifying the 2018 property tax levy.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Monroe, a second by Councilmember Johnson. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll also make a motion to adopt Resolution 151-17, approving the 2018 budget.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Monroe and a second by Councilmember Mark. Any further discussion? Thank you for all your work on this, both you and department heads, um, even Larry Harris. Um, there's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Again, thank you. Uh, it's a good way to go. Um, we're going to go to, it's not on here, but City Council Communications. Mr. Harris would like to give us an update on some things that happened today.
Uh, thank you, Council. The Minnesota Court of Appeals this morning issued its opinion in the Dogren Township annexation matter. As the council may recall, uh, this involved essentially what we would call the dental clinic property. The city had appealed the decision of the, uh, office of administrative hearings. The Carver County District Court had reversed the OAH decision. Uh, OAH had appealed. Uh, we had oral argument before the Court of Appeals on, I think, September 21st, and the Court of Appeals issued its opinion today. The Court of Appeals' opinion affirms the district court reversal of OAH's The city of Carver has had a practice, why this appeal has been going on and this process has been going on, of having me give very high-level reviews. I've regularly told the council that if you wish to discuss strategy and tactics, it's litigation, we could structure a closed session and get into the nuance. So I'm here to give you a very high-level overview. I'm going to tell you what the Court of Appeals did. I'm going to tell you what OAH might be able to do next in terms of their further appeal rights. If the council wants to get further into it, we can talk about the possibility of scheduling a closed meeting. Uh, so the Court of Appeals on, uh, affirmed the district court order, uh, in relation to the amount of the, uh, reimbursement. The court affirmed it, the Court of Appeals affirmed it on a slightly different ground than the district court, but the net effect is the same, that the parties, i.e. the city and the township, are free to agree to a reimbursement amount. The city determined, or the Court of Appeals determined in this case that the OAH was not entitled to claim reimbursement for its costs and expenses. As the council may recall, the OAH had submitted a bill for approximately $1,500 for its fees and asked the city and the township to reimburse it. It was the position, position of both the city and the township that this was not a contested case and it wasn't appropriate for reimbursement. Uh, the Court of Appeals agreed on that issue. The OAH tried at the, at, on the appeal to raise a new issue seek for reimbursement, and the Court of Appeals didn't address that issue. The Court of Appeals also didn't address certain issues as to, you know, who could or could not pay the fee, uh, the, the reimbursement fee. When the Court of Appeals issues a decision, uh, the party who comes out on the short end, in this case, that would be the OAH, has the right to petition the Minnesota Supreme Court for further review. It has thirty days to do so, so effectively until January seventeenth or eighteenth. Um, I have no idea whether the OAH will attempt to try and take this to the Minnesota Supreme Court. I will let you know. If they do do that, we, as the city, have twenty days to respond and weigh in as to whether or not we think the Supreme Court should take review. Um, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. That's the end of my report.
So just so that I'm summating, um, in like normal people's language, um, that went as well as it could have.
The Court of Appeals affirmed the district court decision, which reversed the OAH, which is what we were after.
Perfect. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'm glad you're on that. I absolutely love your sweater today. Really, the monochromatic with the shirt on.
I want the council to know that I selected my wardrobe this morning before I knew I would be here tonight.
[laughing] Um, we are now to City Council Communications. Um, Madam Monroe.
Um, I have nothing council-wise, but I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and like that.
Councilmember Johnson.
Um, Planning Commission meeting on Thursday night. That's it for me. Happy holidays, everybody.
Outstanding. Mrs. Mark?
Uh, our HPC meeting was canceled, so I don't have a report on that. Um, I did want to make a reminder to anyone who might be watching, that the, uh, holiday tree in the gazebo park, we also have the food donation box still there. So if you want to make any donations, please do, um, we'll be accepting them till the end of the year. Is that right, Jim? Do you know when we'll be taking the tree down?
Sure.
We'll go with that.
Yeah.
We're taking the tree down the first Saturday of January.
You, you.
So if you have any food donations before or on the first Saturday of January, that would be very much appreciated.
Yeah, don't, don't give the Florida jam. Hank?
Uh, Parks Commission meeting was canceled. Um, I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, um, to our previous mayor, Mr. Osterdike, I wish him the best in his new battle.
I was going to mention that as well, and it's Osterdike. Um, sorry, I couldn't resist. Had an opportunity to speak with, uh, with Lori over the weekend and, uh, our thoughts. Um, my wife and I were willing to do whatever may take and, uh, let's make sure that we, um, make, continue to contact and make sure that, uh, offers are continued to be made to the Osterdike family. So, agreed. Mr. Merrick, do you have anything you'd like to add? Mr. Scope? Mr. Harris? Two shoes? All right. Um, I wish everyone a happy holiday. Like to throw out the Merry Christmas. William, thank you for being mayor for a day. Um, peace, brother. Um, everyone, thank you.
William?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you know what? William, why don't you come on up? Um, but thank you for another great year. Um, and we look forward to the new year coming forward. And, uh, we will end the meeting. If I could get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
There's a motion and a second.
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Say nay.
Say nay.
Motion carries.
A motion carries.
Thank you all, and hit that.
Hit there?
Yep. Careful, Tevy, don't hit them there.
Get it?
Thank you all.
Yeah, good job.
Standing. You're good. Thanks, bud. Merry Christmas.